And Patty, and Patty running through a crowd with those boobs, she'd knock off two with her boobs. Be a hell of a day. Wait, 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 wait. I don't want to get charged with indecent, it would be indecent. Ain't nothing more indecent to look at, I can't think of. Okay, what are we, what we doing now, let's get down to the bedrock shit. We've had enough light humor for you, I guess some folk need it. I just bet all of them were called to say that she was going to the police on Guy Young because he didn't have ministerial license, and he married Bruce and Shonda. Ain't this a shit? She was getting me, she wanted to get me for being a witness. Guy had a photographic copy of the license and the marriage license made for her. Ain't that a bitch? She don't care who she destroys. Keep telling me, that's good, keep telling me all this shit, because I do want to make mince me to her.
Dad, she said the same thing about Tony and I, that how he met Shonda and married Tony and I, that he was false minister.
He is a false minister, my ass. He's got a doctor of divinity from the Presbyterian church and the disciples. He's ordained in our denomination, bitch. But that just shows how wicked she is, she didn't know it, so she was willing to get him, go put him in jail. I don't remember that bitch. And Christine, a black woman, gonna put her in jail too as being a false witness, I don't remember her. She better live, she better, she better enjoy her hate while she's got it, because that bitch is gonna get it some way. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we ought to think out some good long way though to see if they last awhile. Life is its own worst judgment. Yes, Shonda?
She told, she also told the foreign minister here that I was a setup to get Bruce over here in a slave camp. And, you know, so when I went in to talk to him, he said that, you know, so he wouldn't believe anything I had to say. She told him that I was a setup to get him over here.
You're a pretty setup. But that's a damn lie. Boy, they sure tell you how they do things, huh? How long were you, you two guys, fiancés, how long were you relating? My Christ, before that happened, two years? Two years forever comes to P L, when you and Bruce together? It's a long time to wait for a setup. They're lying, sons of bitches. And it's such a, wicked, 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 I, just, just write it up. I don't want to get my mind on the bitch today, because I can't get my hands on her. Now, I want to get her primarily for trying to kill your mother, who your next best friend. I want to get her come storming ass in that church trying to kill her, I'm telling you, the bitch gonna pay for that shit. Shift around, shift around. By the way, to show you the evil of the CIA system, the Interpol system, our chief informant, Harold Rogers, has been exposed to triple leukemia. It's brought about by some type of radiation. He's one of the chief informers that stepped out, and he's dying, a black man who'd been high up in police ranks. A number of others have been killed by that, by just being exposed to the tests that are done by these, by the government, done on their own officers and on their own military, I told you about that. Now, can anyone tell me anything about the news this morning? Lou, tell me some point. Better shut up now.
Jane found the soul of her body and got fifty thousand dollars for the Black Panthers.
She did one time, but her high moment. An old seventy-year-old white prick.
You know she's a sellout, you know?
She's a sellout, that's what pains.
He's still talking.
Amazing, some folk, some folk could listen to Sammy Davis, Sammy Davis Lous's Manhood if they ever had it. That's pretty good, Lou, you gotta, that's a good, you caught that, I passed it with that very fast, so, that's pretty good.
Lou Jones Jr., he worked with me the other night giving out treats, and...
Says you can't hear you.
I just wanted to say about Lou Jones Jr., I hadn't had an opportunity to really get to know him too well, I hope I get to more. But he's a natural organizer. He is a natural organizer, Lou Jones Jr. is a natural organizer. I'm just telling, from what I could pick up, from the way he helped me hand out treats, he could be really a general superintendent when he gets grown up.
Yeah, I like a kid, I like that kid.
Everybody has that natural ability to look at a situation and pull it together and organize it and push it forward.
I don't know his name, but he said we should have, they should have more police stories on TV.
That's what Showtale, I was very proud, Showtale has, Butler has a little problem, she was, she caught that thing on television, that's pretty complicated. That's what she was getting ready to tell me, so what you were saying, Conway Butler? She's a senior, she's a senior, come on, Phil, come on. She has somatosis, supposedly damaged from diabetes, this is fascinating.
I said TV was set up back in Eisenhower's time, and Harry Truman, for the, for the black man's benefit, that he would blow his mind on different kind of musics and all that high, high, high music. The folks, it was so high they'd have to almost knock their air drums out listening at it. But it worked with the young people. And of course, they are keeping it up all along to keep the, over, keep a ruler over the young man's, young people's mind, that they won't be able to think for themselves.
Yeah, you got an important aspect, there's more to that story too there. It was very, very, we all knew it, but it now is revealed by FBI papers, it's a sick mess. It was a long, complicated mess, boy, they, they've been anticipating the human mind for years. I say anything that's that well orchestrated, friend, you can know is at a high level of conspiracy at this day. If they were, if they didn't even hardly know what TV was about, and they had already this concocted shit, and government funding to do it, what was some of the things they set TV up, they had all the purposes they tried to achieve through TV? I don't expect everyone of you to remember all of it, but you, yeah, yeah, what, what was some of it? Just, okay. No, hold it, no, hold it. Go down, just go down the line here, just go down the line here. That's it, that's it, you're standing, you want to ask her? Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it.
John Wayne is dying from open heart surgery.
Good, I'm glad he is, but thank you for the news.
Today, I'm, today's my birthday, Doc.
What's that?
Today's my birthday.
Happy birthday, honey. Happy white night. Oh, sweet, you're lovely, I love you. Happy birthday.
Eighty-eight years today, Doc.
How many?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight?
Yes, Doc.
Beautiful, love. You went, you left the Caribbean to go to the United States and come back. That's good. Eighty-eight, marvelous. She's sweet. Now, with that, you heard something else about John Wayne today, what else you hear about John Wayne today? I can't get over these sons of bitches. I'd at least die with a little dignity if I had, I'd think even capitalism could get over their fears. What happened to, did old Johnny, Bruce, what happened to Johnny? No, she didn't go to him, he called for her. Can't hear. President- Shut up back there! Thank you, mugs.
He called for President Carter's sister to come with him, to convert him over to Jesus Christ, and then at his last minute, he think that, Jesus Christ is gonna come out at the last minute and save him a spot maybe in heaven.
Said he had a feeling in the hospital room that Jesus entered his heart. The poor fucking heart's been just opened, so it flowed a little blood in, I don't know, he got that big fart Jesus in there on top of that, something else. Old son of a bitch, stupid old son of a bitch. Any, any old fuck. Big shoot him up cowboy, John Wayne, he scared of dying, so he gets on Jesus's side just before he dies. Throws his cigarettes away just in time. So he can be in that great Hollywood company up in the sky. Well, shoot him up for Jesus, dumbass. I, I don't mind white nights, when I think of the maniacs that's back in that country. Yeah, what's up? She said the kitchen wants us to die, I don't know what the fuck's going on. She said the kitchen wants the diabetics and the pregnant mothers to do what?
Raise their hands first.
To raise their hands, so you can get your potion first. Okay, okay. Hurry, moms, maybe, are you making any new jokes on all this shit? You ought to have eight new lines on this shit. You ought, for Guy Young, you ought to do, you ought to do a takeoff on John Wayne finding Jesus, your next show. Mae West? Yeah, yeah, no, Mae, Mae West. Mae West tried to have her boobs tied up, she got some fucking infection and they're about to rot off. I think she deserves it, the old bitch. Right. All right, well, Lou Jones, what happened, what was some of the horrors of that TV business?
The, I was gonna say something else about FBI.
FBI? Quiet, please.
One, one of the FBI agents revealed about, about TVs, but, let's see.
A CIA storm. All the meters are dead, out of our bands, they said.
And, he said that it makes, it makes people don't want to stand up to the capitalists.
We'll have to have quiet now, we're gonna get some news here. You can't hear back there, what do you mean you can't hear back there?
It makes the people don't stand up to the capitalists, but-
Is the PA dead back there, you having more trouble than usual? Everybody else is waving tobacco roll and even outside saying they hear it. So let's get to, let's talk on loudly, come on.
Okay, one of the FBI agents said that they can brainwash people by-
What's his name, anybody remember? I forgot myself, that's why I'm asking.
James Caprio. James Caprio, Caprio.
That's right, that's right.
It makes, it makes the people don't stand up to the capitalists, because it shows in the TVs that the people who be trying to struggle, they always lose. And it, it make the people scared, the police stories and stuff like that.
Okay, now let's go down point to point, each give a point of what, thank you, Lou, you have a good mind, good shot mind. What, what are some of the very dangerous horrible things that the, that this FBI paper revealed? This guy had held it for twenty-five years and he's dying. I guess it's only if you'll save to, to reveal it. His wife's dead too, wasn't it? Okay.
Another thing about the TV shows, that they're, 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 they're brainwashing the people by, by showing them, they use large guns so that they won't know that small guns can do the same amount of damage as a larger weapon, and also-
That's what the mayor's commission called for. This is a little different from the paper, that was a separate thing, the mayor was concerned about the violence that, so the handgun, the Saturday Night Special, gives people too many ideas that they can go out, see, they don't want, that was something they didn't count on. They liked the violence, because what did they do? It released, it released the pent-up emotion. People get caught up in the shows, then they lose all their anger, and it, it works a good thing for them in that angle, that was number one. Shit, it was so complex, I'm too tired without rest, remember all of it. It, what the shit, there was some new angle, isolation. Promote isolation. There were some horrible things that Hoover quoted, that when the population has to be isolated, when segments of the population have to be isolated. And, dangerous minorities, yes. And forgets when they're hungry, yes, it causes them to forget when they're hungry. And that there was a governmental funding to see that the major television industries be able to put a TV, Westinghouse in particular named, to put a TV in every house, no matter if they had food. And we see that. Did you notice everything in the United States was going up, TV were going down? We should have been able to see that, that was plain. Remember when TVs went down, down, even you could get color TV for a damn cheap price? Hell, you could buy a TV, all of a sudden it was four hundred, five hundred, and you could buy a son of a bitch for sixty-nine ninety-five.
Almost.
It's about the only thing you can get uncredited, that's what it said, this FBI report said that. You can rent TVs, almost nothing on contract. But Hoover admitted the ineffectuality of the system too, he said something else, I wish I could stick my brain on it, I'll have to go back and get the notes. So even though it's a bad, the free enterprise system, it cannot meet the needs of total employment or something, I mean, it cannot not be done. Can't eliminate poverty. And eventually, it will have to isolate whole segments of the population. The government will have to do that, so we want to make them passive, so they put the input on police stories, so people would respect the police. Wake up, dears, please. Would, would, put the input, the emphasis would be on police, to make them respect police, so they would not resist when the police came for them. And we see that every day, women, policewoman, police stories, I don't know all them, those damn things, I never watched TV. What is it? Make them hate minorities, yes. Settle prejudices in, both in Hollywood too. Disney was greatly funded for all these cheap ship comedies. And gets people to convalesce quicker, so they can be back in the job market, and save the insurance companies money. Big business. I've been dealing with human beings like that now for twenty, he may be, the report's twenty-five years old and started before that. That, that's a bad business, if they were back there dealing with people like that, like a piece of shit, dealing with specks of dust, or like you deal with some kind of a one-celled creature, if they were doing it back then, you can better believe what the hell they're doing now. If you're laying awake at night, yeah, about insomnia, what was exactly, insomnia, insomnia, insomnia acts can be dangerous. So you got to divert them with the late, late shows.
If they lay awake at nights worrying, they might get to thinking that the system was wrong instead of them.
Yeah.
And people should not be allowed to have time to just think, they had to be kept diverted.
That's right. I said you don't need as much food too, with TV, they'd been proven, they'd done some study that you don't need as much food. That's wonderful. Think we were, we were lending ourselves, I wish every time I'd seen somebody looking at some bitch, we'd have thrown something through it. Think that we were being controlled, don't need Adolf Hitler, we had Adolf TV. You're waiting too long, you're waiting too long, the Asians supposed to take over the world. And you're going back and fuck with Mrs. Carter. Huh? You're going back and fuck with Mrs. Carter, and let me see it. This is one thing giving me courage. I wish, it wouldn't make no difference what, just long as they're not, not one of the honky, this thing, come through, it's honky mommy, but she's now a nigger mommy, but my god, it come through, just slid through. Slid through. Just give it some time, ain't gonna have no trouble, because they're all gonna look like this. That's right. Then you're gonna fight over it. Ain't gonna go fight over this. Say, look at me, honey, you think you're a fucker, I'm the fucker. I fucking, I come through. Funny, isn't that funny, his daddy is mixed, Asiatic and white. He's part of me on the show here. And then his mama is white, and he still comes, so you look like you're Tom Director from the TV. Come in here express, right down the damn Asian main line. Right? Temple logic, yeah, logic. That's gives me encouragement, not because he's my grandchild, but because by God, one day, Mr. White Man won't have, he thinks he's racial purity, he's shit, he can't match that. You fuck it, you fuck it out, won't he? Says grandpa, I sense it's got plans for me, and I don't know whether I like him or not. But I'm hardy off the bottle. You're not off the bottle. The bottle? Look at his face. I would go had a hostile look. It's okay, shit. I'll share anything with father, it says, everything has to be go- Okay, what's next on the damn mess?
Another thing, with Samaria is holding her own and gaining more ground.
Yes, 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 sure. Sure, Kay Rose is, she was up all night, she should be, she should be in bed. We don't punish people. I even like Kay Rose. She even nice, you, I could hate you one day, and if you get nice, twenty, get nice twenty-four, twenty-four hours later, I love you. Keep smiling, Ken, you look beautiful. Because good work is what beauty, you worked and didn't make any complaint, nobody comes, she didn't make a complaint, worked all night. I think you ought to give Kay a good hand.
Do I have supervision, Dad?
What?
Do I have supervision, Dad?
Is he, you not to be under supervision?
I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, you will not be under supervision?
Yeah, I like that.
You been doing pretty well?
Yes.
Just today, everyone's under supervision, they're all sleeping. Now, honey, we'll let you try, don't fuck up.
Thank you, Dad.
Because sometimes I think everybody ought to be under supervision, it makes, it breaks the best out of this. Right? I'm under supervision. Yeah, they don't understand it, it's too complex to understand, I guess. I'm under supervision. I was, I'm just delighted to come here and talk, just delighted. Thirteen hours yesterday, I loved that so much, hell, I went home and jacked off five times after that, I had so much fun here. I hope you want to learn my bite words. I'm obviously a prisoner. The last thing I want to do is talk. Hurts too much in the first place. Second place, don't work, and then in third place, people always mumble. So nobody could listen, and you people's security are gonna have to take more loose in here to get it under control, because they just keep it up. Go ahead.
Well, Dad, the thing that I was gonna say about television was already said, but Lou asked me to say that, TV, that they use it for propaganda, and that they said that that was gonna get everybody having the TV, television, even the poor people. And I had another thing that I was gonna say, they said that UFOs, that they have, they come in, that you had said, they come in groups of four and sixteen. They went, they went faster, sometimes they just went up higher, they just completely stopped. And the other thing that you had said was Sammy Davis Jr. was, was a sellout, and that he was going crazy because he couldn't fuck anymore.
That's, you're a smart kid. And he is a bite kid. And by the way, another thing, you remind me of Alpha Gop, and in that report, I didn't, I didn't make the connection. Remember before, we'd heard news about cable TV being put in the home, so that they'll be able to monitor every home, both ways. You can see it, and they can see you, big brother can watch you, like nineteen eighty-four. Well, it said the goal was to have a cable TV system in every home. And at the time of this report, it mentioned, currently, the current news was, that there are twenty-one thousand five hundred homes in USA that have cable TV. Now, that would be, if you average families five, you're better than half of your people already get under cable TV. I didn't pick up on the cable TV. And that was in there too. So they can watch you. You worry about a little watching, we do, you like to watch while you screw, and watch while you blow your nose, and watch while you wipe your ass, or take your tampecs out, huh? TV on or off, it will, it will monitor you, on or off. USA.
They had something in Detroit, they were gonna start a mandatory situation where it costs six dollars, that you'd have to pay the six dollars, and they would connect something to your television. You would hear the government or the system speaking to you through your television. It would cost you, you'd have to put it on your, I think it was through the Edison Company, six dollars, that would be added to your, to your bill.
You can see.
No, this one, they could tune into your house and start talking, and you would give it some affection.
Oh, that's for the new television, yeah, they're, they're doing that. And fools are buying that TV, so that television, I mean, that telephone service, paying six bucks for it in major cities now, and all the instructions are what? They say it's supposed to protect you in case of a national emergency, nuclear war. What the fuck they gonna tell you? Hello, patron, the bomb is coming, you have eighteen minutes to get ready to have your ass fried. That's all the fuck you could do, what you gonna do in downtown Detroit? No underground shelters, only Soviets, only communist countries have underground shelters for their people. They're dumb pricks, pay six dollars, I say, bomb's on its way, honey, pray. You people don't know what the hell's going on out there, I'm not trying to be humorous, but you showed, but you don't understand what's going on. What's that?
I don't think they'd tell the people anyway, read and overheard some stuff, to the effect that if people know a bomb is coming, they can't go around crazy. And that the decision was that they would not tell the people.
I'm not ready, but I wouldn't doubt it.
The excuse was that more people were unsheltered right after they heard the news, because they would panic and rush out from the stores and stuff. But the net effect was, if a bomb would be coming, they would not tell the people, they would let it land on the people's heads without any warning.
Makes sense, keep the slaves in order until they're fried, till your eyeballs drop out, they ain't gonna tell nobody. Because you might run down the street and get in the way of one of their helicopters while they're trying to get out to some refuge, or to get to their jet to take off, if they can make it in time. Or their underground tunnel that they got for all the rich ruling class, what they call that motherfucker, in Silo Mount? Iron Mountain in New York, Rockefeller. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. What you call it? It's true, it's what it is. Vertical what? Vertical takeoff and landing, so they can shoot right up the jet and get their asses out. And come down here so we can shoot them. How many good hunting? Whoever have his ovens hot.